We're going to call the May 19th, 2025, monthly board meeting order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Call favor. Second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the April 28th, 2025 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Seven minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
All right, board members, I want to recognize some distinguished guests with us this evening. This is a fun meeting because we get some crowning achievements of what a lot of our students have done this year. And many of our groups can't be here. There happens to be graduation nights, there's a lot of other things happening, but we're forcing a couple of our groups here. So I want to recognize them. First, I'm going to call our robotics team from the Zits up. So you guys come on up here and Melissa, I want you to join them as well, okay? Come on up in front of the room. Board members, the team here, Melissa's going to tell you all about it because it's a pretty sophisticated operation, but they have been making their tour around the city. They were at Rotary a couple of weeks ago and showed off all of the work that they've done this year. But Melissa Rice is their outstanding coach, sponsor, teacher. Yes, and I want y'all to tell us about the school. Tell us about, please, the robotics program and who our kids are, okay? Take it away.
So these are six, seventh and eighth graders from Pizitz Middle School, and every year they have to apply for the robotics team. And this is a little less than half of our team. We have 31 students participate this year, and five out of our six teams, so within our big school team, we have a team for every robot. So this year we have six robots that the kids designed and built and kept record of their design process in a notebook. So they are designing, recording their process, coding, building the robot, testing the robot, and then having that robot compete against other robots. And so five of our six teams were able to compete at the state championship, and three of those five teams qualified for the world championship, and they traveled to Dallas. It feels like a month ago at this point, but it was really just last weekend. And so it's May, so we're very excited for them and had an exciting end to their year, and they work incredibly hard. My co-sponsor, Ms. Nichols, is new to us this year, and we are so thankful that she'll be with us again next year. And also, none of that would be possible, the level of achievement that they've reached would not be possible without our parents. Our parents are so invested, they take these kids to other houses sometimes on the weekends. They're building the robots all the time, and they're taking them to tournaments at least four times a year. And so we really appreciate our parents' involvement and their investment as well. So thank y'all for taking time to honor them today.
Yeah, can we get you to tell us who or in what grade you're in? We're going to start with you.
Hi, my name is Soli Singh. I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Mary Kepney, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Lucy Chen, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Lisa Feng, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Addison Gouing, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Alex Wing, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Ethan Johnson, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Wood Gowan, I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Karen Fatale, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Shambro Das, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm JD Walborn, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Jai Koppick, and I'm also in sixth grade.
Right. Well, congratulations, outstanding work this year. You need any more pictures? Okay. I want to call Jessica Sutton, who is a teacher at high school, not just a teacher, the teacher of teachers in AP Chemistry. I think she's so good, she could have even helped me get qualified for, and that would have been quite amazing. Jessica, I'm really glad you're here, but I want you to share with board members about that science look at. You got me.
So our science look at team is, it's sort of like a track team, but for science. There's 23 different events ranging from academics to lab-based events to engineering events, and we were able to go to the state tournament this year, our students qualified to move on at the regional tournament. And this is Tomas Marovic, who heads up all of our electrical engineering on our team. And he and his teammates were able to secure first place in the air trajectory event this year in the entire state. So they did better than anyone else in Alabama at that event, and I'm super proud of them.
How much grade are you in?
11th currently.
11th, okay. You have a plan to major at this point in college?
Electrical engineering.
That sounds fantastic. Congratulations. Thank you for representing the team, too. We have several other recognitions that we're just going to do by pictures. Obviously, with graduation, a lot of our teams are not able to make it, but this is the future business leaders of America. These are students who represented state championship competition, future business leaders of America back in April. You can see future Kaylee and Matthew there. This is our personal finance team coached by Steven Johnson at the high school, like we're state champions in the personal finance competition. All right, for just continuing their dominance in athletics, our Vestavia Hills High School boys won, like, their fourth consecutive tennis championship. The girls also won a state championship. They're coached by Oliver Aaron and Tim Marie Fisk. Our boys track team, we're named as state champions, and that was coached by Richard Anderson, certainly a large group there. They were runners-up in cross-country, by the way, in the fall. Vestavia Hills High School girls soccer team, Coach Bridget Metta, just an incredible finish to an outstanding career for Coach Bridget Metta. The girls soccer team did a great job, won the state championship. And then our boys golf team, Coach Todd Evans and Matt Cameron, were also named state champions in a rousing fashion last week in Oxmoor, at Oxmoor Golf. So collectively this year, athletic programs, I think we've got eight state champions in outstanding equal work in the arts and academic areas, and I look forward to sharing more about those tonight. Any comments?
I have one comment. First of all, love and breadth for the success we're seeing up here in athletics, finance, business, and science. As a father of a son who's just finished a year AP Chemistry, I will say that Jessica does a wonderful job, and the report I got back was that the actual AP test was nowhere near as hard as her exams. So wonderful, wonderful experience for that unit, though it was very difficult. So I think that speaks well of what we're doing across the board, to see that level of commitment from our sponsors and teachers, but also the success that we see with our sons out there.
Just one comment about the robotics team. That just started in the middle school level, it starts in the grade school level. I participated years back, or I guess the correct way of saying, tried to participate years back, and I was floored at just what the grade school students were doing at that time. And then to see them advance to the middle school stage, and then I can only imagine the high school stage. So what we have going on is just truly phenomenal, and it's just, it's a credit to our community, Todd, you, but our teachers, and then what we have as students and parents is second to none. I'm so proud to be part of the community that puts its best foot forward through science because it's such a, I mean, this is the future, and the future is here now, and what they're doing and learning is absolutely phenomenal.
I do agree with you and believe that our folks, our community in general, believes in the standard of excellence. And I'm so pleased to see these accomplishments our students have, and really fantastic teachers that usher and guide them along the way. So we're very fortunate. And speaking of the standard of excellence, I want to take a moment to recognize Mayor Ashley Curry, who's with us tonight, who's got a special recognition he'd like to give.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, I'd ask if Scott could come up. You know, one thing we certainly, that excels in our city is our schools. And folks, not just faculty here, certainly, I commend y'all, but it takes a special group of people to be on the board. And the dedication and the commitment, we couldn't do it without y'all. You hear me say time and time again that the Vestavia's in this Vestavia. The volunteers in Vestavia for all of our boards are just incredible. You've got a future board member coming on that just spent how many years on Parks and Rec?
Four and a half.
You haven't lived until you've been to a Parks and Rec meeting. You've got some emotional upset parents who, Kyle is obviously ready for the major leagues. But anyway, let me read this, and of course, we're going to present, we're going to officially recognize Scott at an upcoming council meeting. That got all, you know, changed around because of graduation tonight, so at some future meeting, you'll also get some other accolades. But it says, "On behalf of the City of Vestavia Hills, it's with great pleasure that I present to Scott Brown a certificate of appreciation for your service on the Vestavia Hills Board of Education. Board members have a longstanding tradition of providing vision for our school system and its students, and ensuring that system personnel have the resources needed to achieve that vision. We are grateful for your devotion to the community of Vestavia Hill. Civic engagement by volunteers is vital to assure the high quality of life in our city. On behalf of the City Council, I deeply appreciate your dedication and wish you much success in the future."
Thank you. Thank you.
To echo what Mayor Curry just said, I don't think our community realizes how blessed we are to have had, Scott is our president last year, but then previous four years as a board member on here. Scott is so well-respected in the legal community, but then as far as our Vestavia community, and then just as a friend and as a parent, is, just respect him just tremendously. And I'm just so privileged to be able to not only work with him, but learn from him. If any of us have a question, you know, call Scott. And his, his, well, his wise counsel is just, it's so helpful and so appreciated, and I want you to know that. And others can speak to it, but I just really thank you. And yeah, I definitely have your cell number.
Well, I want to just echo everything Jay just said, but Scott has, I didn't know you really at all until five years ago, three and a half years ago. Got to be a personal friend, and I've learned so much from you. I tell people when I, that don't know Scott, I'm one of the smartest people I know. Well, how long have you known him? Not very long. But yeah, the city, the schools are in a better place because of you, and you've done a fantastic job. And we're, you know, one of the things, too, I can say about you is every single time I've ever called you, you answer. And that's just, that's a good quality to have. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll say, reiterate some of the same things you've heard. Scott, the two years I've been on the board, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I think just always having a calm, just demeanor about everything. Any kind of questions, Scott's already kind of legalistically looked at every aspect you could possibly think of, and really helps you think through all the processes. Scott, you kind of being at the forefront of this group for this past year has been great. It's been a fun experience. We appreciate you, appreciate the leadership.
Yeah, I'll say, I think Scott was probably the first person I spoke to when considering the board position, and to echo what Kyle said, he's so calming, just really reassured me that I was, you know, capable of being in a position like this as a parent and just a member of this community. But I think what makes Scott an incredible person and a leader is that he helps bring up everybody around him. He's not just trying to elevate himself in a role or position, but I think he gives all of us the confidence that we can also just use our hearts and our discernment and do the best job that we can in this role every day. And I just thank you so much for the short time that I've got to learn from you, and hope you stay in touch, don't just disappear.
I would like to have a turn at that if I may. I salute you and congratulate you, Scott, for a job very well done. You were absolutely a great board member for five years and an excellent leader and president. And I could always tell from your comments, like you made tonight, that you were very knowledgeable about what's going on in our school system. And we have nine schools, a thousand employees, 6,800 students, you knew everything about it. And you were absolutely splendid as president. And one thing that sticks out to me is, as a leader, you always gave the credit rather than accepted the credit. And the 38,900 of us that are not here tonight, and I want to say on behalf of every one of those people, thank you, Scott Brown, you did a great job.
If I may, I want to read a letter that came from a former board president, just to, wanted to give acknowledgement tonight. "Scott, congratulations on completing your tenure on the Board of Education. You have been an incredible blessing to our community and the Vestavia Hills school system. It was an honor to work alongside you and learn from your brilliant mind. You are a team player, compassionate toward others, influenced by your kindness, and have a sense of urgency to ensure that your time was well-spent, leaving our system better than you found it. Your perspective and knowledge you brought to the team was critical on countless occasions. There is no doubt you were put on the board to serve during such a time as this. We thank you for your service and hope that you look back on your tenure with fond memories and realize that you made an eternal impact. May the Lord continue to bless your life. I know you will be missed. Jacqueline Hudson." So I echo all the comments, and for me to necessarily say them again, but I want to tell you that in my mind, in my circle, I always want to be surrounded by people who challenge me to make me a better person and a better professional. Scott epitomizes that, absolutely. I cannot tell you how many times that I would work at length on plans or ideas and pitch them, and how many times he would pitch something back that I haven't thought about. The challenge of trying to make sure that I was ready to have a conversation with Scott was always fun to me, and I usually miss something. And thank goodness for that, because it always makes something a little bit better, so I appreciate that. But above all, I think all of your colleagues would say this, you're just a really great person. You're a fine man, a man of virtuous character, and someone I think that models the epitome of what it's, what it takes to do this work. And without serving on it, it's hard to appreciate what these five ladies and gentlemen do for our school system. It's very much a thankless and kind of behind-the-scenes job at times, but this represents what our school system is the way it is. So thank you, Scott, congratulations.
First of all, thank y'all. I will be very brief, but I will say, people ask me often whether have you enjoyed being on the school level? And I candidly would say, well, enjoy is kind of a weird word to use, but I am very thankful for the opportunity to serve. I have learned from so many people. I've served with really strong leaders, people who are connected to the community in ways that I just do not, including each of the four people up here, who are more connected in our community. And what a wonderful asset that is for board members to have those connections and to understand what the concerns are in the community, and also be able to communicate that back to the parents and to the people members of the community who don't have children. I've learned from every one of the board members, from Lisa, and Steve, and Jennifer, and Jacqueline, and Jay, and Jonathan, and Kyle, and Amber, all of you have been a joy to serve with. And I really look at it and say, I was the least qualified of all of that group to serve, so it's been a joy to learn from y'all. The other thing I would say, and I think I hopefully say this to our community, is having the opportunity to get to know Todd, and Courtney, and Dr. Rainey, and Cemary's back there, and Wood, and all of our principals, and it's been great to meet with me and spend a little time with the individuals, sharing what they are doing at their schools. And I say this also with our council, with Mayor Curry, and Rusty, and George, Kimberly and Paul, all of them have our community's and their schools' best interests at heart. Occasionally, you will read comments, and say, well, so folks doing this because they've got some other agenda. And if they do, it's an agenda that's been very well hidden for me. Everybody I'm interacting with has nothing but the best interest of our community, and our schools, and our students at heart. And even, I would say that the times when I've gotten communications from parents who maybe didn't agree with the decision that we made, it was always because they wanted what was best for their students. And I think that is the overwhelming sentiment of our community, of our parents, of our families, and I think that's the reason that our schools continue to be the crown jewel of our community. So with all of that, I guess the other person I absolutely need to thank is my wife, who didn't sign up for this, didn't apply for it, and yet, in a way, very real way, served as just as much as I did. She had a lot of questions that she would not have gotten otherwise, and appreciate her allowing me to do this. I think she will also be glad to say that we have now served. So I thank you. It's been a wonderful experience, and I'm very glad that I had some friends who were on the board in times past and said, hey, I think you would really, here's that word, get enjoy doing this. And candidly, I have. So thank y'all.
I want to recognize, before we talk in our business life, Shelley General is with the mayor, Lillian Shelley, who's joining our board June 30th next month, and so welcome to the board.
Thank you.
All right. Financial statement, Courtney, take it away.
Good afternoon, board members. I've provided the April 30th, 2025 financial statements and check register for your review. As of April 30, 2025, we have collected 95.2% of our budgeted annual tax revenues compared to the 104.6% that we received last year at the state. In April, we earned $144,638 in interest income on our investment in treasury suite, and our total expenditures and transfers out in the general fund as of April 30th were 64.1% of the budget compared to 61% last year. All things being equal, we should be at 53, 58.3% of our budget in the seventh month of the fiscal year, and we are a little above that due to some annual payments that have been made. Our monthly financial statements and check registers are available for viewing on our website upon board approval, and all bank accounts have been reconciled as of April 30, 2025.
Board members, I recommend approval of financial statement for April 25.
I've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve financial statement for April 2025. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Courtney. Item six is consent items, and I recommend the board approve these. This is for disposal of property, field trips that are in-state overnight and out-of-state overnight.
I've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the consent items related to disposal of board property and in-state overnight and out-of-state overnight field trips. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor?
Under business, I'm going to defer to Scott on item 6 through D. This is part of what is the statutory requirement for an annual board meeting, and this is the annual board meeting. So take it with you.
I will entertain a motion to nominate a new president for the 25, 26 school year. Do I hear nomination?
I'm moved to nominate Jay Stewart as president.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're doing a great job. I will now entertain a motion to nominate a new vice president for the board for 25, 26 school year. Do I hear a motion?
I would like to nominate Jonathan Handy as the vice president for the 25, 26 school year.
And do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is the approval for the board meeting calendar for 2025 through 2026. I have the opportunity to review those proposed meeting dates. Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will now entertain a motion to forego the board compensation for the 25, 26 school year. Under the state law, we are allowed to be compensated, but it has been our practice historically to forego that compensation. Do I hear a motion for forego of the compensation for our next school year?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item E, I recommend the board approve changes to job descriptions.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the changes to several job descriptions. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'd like to talk through that if I can for a moment. Most of the, well, these job descriptions largely are director positions in our office. Part of the structure of our organizational chart is changing a bit. I'll talk more about that here in the course of the summer with you, but the significant change on these is supervision that I've changed to superintendent or designate. That way, for evaluation purposes, directors could be evaluated by me or someone I choose. That is across the board on all these job description. That is the major one. There are a few tightening pieces of job descriptions here and there, but the jobs themselves have not changed in any significant way, so as far as their rest supervision.
All those in favor of the superintendent's recommendation?
Aye.
Item F, I recommend the board approve job descriptions for student assistance counselor and lead student assistance counselor.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the job description for student assistance counselor and lead student assistance counselor. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, throughout the course of this year, as we've been talking about our strategic plan and goals setting that we're willing to make as we move into the future, it is very much on our mind, on top of mind, the importance of making sure we've got the appropriate support for our students if we're licensed to mental health. And this is a step in that direction that we'll be talking about more this summer, to increase capacity in this area for our school system that I think is really important, K through 12. So these are job descriptions that will help us get started with that process.
All those in favor of approving the job descriptions recommended by the superintendent?
Aye.
Item G, I recommend the board approve the contract for CT General Contractors LLC for the amount of $699,621 for the renovation project at Vestavia Hills Elementary West.
I've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract for CT General Contractors for the amount of $699,621 for the renovation project at East. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, you acted on this bid back in April, and also a letter of intent, and this is the contract, just to formalize that.
All those in favor?
Item H, I recommend the board approve AP Latin and American Latin Sign Language textbooks.
I've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Latin and American Sign Language textbooks. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item I is emergency capital project at Vestavia Hills Elementary West. I'll put the recommendation on the table and talk with you about that. I recommend the board approve an emergency declaration for work on Vestavia Hills Elementary West Capital Project.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve an emergency declaration for work at Vestavia Hills Elementary West for a capital project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. You are certainly aware by this point about these circumstances at West, but I just wanted to brief you as a board again about it. Yesterday, about 6:45 a.m., we had a pretty heavy surge of water during a heavy rainfall coming into the parking lot west and moved down the hill, crossed over our sidewalk areas, and down into the patio areas where our kindergarten classes are. And that area got flooded very quickly, probably about a 15-minute event, and that led to some water into the downstairs of the area. I think that what the water line was probably about four inches of water in most of the area in the basement parts of West. That includes kindergarten classrooms, a few first grade classrooms, some specials classrooms, a little piece of the gym, and other closet storage type areas that we quickly dispatched Brookstone Restoration. They were here yesterday morning, probably early afternoon, and were doing work of cleanup on this project, and that was to get all of the water out, out and off of the floor, and mud, and all the other things that was there. And they got that. And they got that process completed sometime late into the evening and then started the next process, which is really to restore, make sure we have appropriate indoor air quality. So that process is taking place all throughout the day. We continue to work in that area to make sure it's dry, and the quality of air humidity in particular is at the level it needs to be to have our students back in class. Our teachers have started to go back to work and put some things back in place. At this point, we're planning to try to get to start on Wednesday. I think it's really important, obviously, that we get them to school this week with two days remaining. So that is our goal at this point. I'll have a better idea tomorrow if we're able to cross that finish line, but that's where we're standing at this point. And we will assess any kind of damage that needs to be taken care of during the summer. So the part of this is that I do not have a value of what it may cost. It sort of depends on the level of damage to flooring, or cabinetry, or other type of things. So this gives us an opportunity to do that. Mr. Boone meets the requirements for...
Well-stated, yes.
All right. Well, I'll take any questions you got on this one.
I'll just note that this seems to be, this weekend seems to be a really good example of what our central office and our administrators and teachers deal with. If you've got flooding at one school, you've got a power outage at another school, you have final exams going on at the high school, freshman campuses. We have graduation tonight, but we are celebrating the achievements of our students, and all of that is going on all the time. And we just have an exceptional team put together that Dr. Frinney leads that allows us to have it. And we're just very fortunate to have such a good group in place that's making these decisions, making sure everything still happens.
Susan's been on top of it. I'm not sure she's here, but I know what she's doing. She's been on top of this, and the technical here of business there, and our maintenance team, and all the others, folks around have done a great job. I just feel for our teachers, this is home. You know, our teachers, classrooms are their second home, and we will be as supportive through the summer as we can with it. So if we can get across the finish line this week, we'll shoot far and then we'll go from there.
What I've been very encouraged by is the emphasis that I've heard Dr. Frinney and the teachers and the administration was, trying to make sure that these students get a good last day or two of this year, that they get that opportunity to celebrate what they've been doing this year. So, all right. All in favor? Do I hear a motion?
All right. Last time, it's personnel, and I recommend the board approve the personnel actions that are submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the personnel items that are submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody here who can comment? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Before, in one sentence, I'll present Scott with a little, a little token of our appreciation for Kyle Brown.
I will miss you guys next year, but I'm gonna hold away. I think we have a motion to adjourn that's been seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a adjourn?